May we request the Honorable Side Shike to lead us in the invocation.
Please observe silence, we will pray to our Almighty Allah. Bismillahirohmanirohim. Alhamdulillahi rabbil alamin. Arrahmanir rahim. Maliki yaumiddin. Iyyaka na'budu wa iyyaka nastain. Ihdina shara'tal mustaqim. Shara'tal ladzina an'amta alaihim. Ghairil maqdubi alaihim walad dhalin. Amin. Rabbana zalamna amfussana. Wa illam tagufirlana watarhamna lana kunanna mina alkhazirin. Rabbana afrik alaina sabran wathabit akadamana. Wansurna alal qawmil kafirin. Rabbana atina fi dunya hasana. Wa fil akhirati hasanatan waqin adabannar. Wa adakhilna jannata ma alaabrar. Ya aziz, ya gfar, ya rabb alamin. Walhamdulillahi rabbil alamin.
Before we proceed, the Chair would wish to make two manifestations. First, I will no longer be assuming as Chair of the Committee on Science and Technology as ordered by the Chief Minister. Being a good soldier, I will abide by the order of the Chief Minister. Secondly, please to make the process orderly, those who would want to speak from this side, take the left rostrum. Those who would want to speak from this side, take the right rostrum. Para hindi ho tayo nagtatawiran ng pagsasalita. Floor Leader. Take your seats.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, I move to amend the Order of Business today to include two proposed resolutions. Resolution number three and resolution number thirty-four to also include the Privilege Hour and the first stage of bills. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to amend the Order of Business. Is there any second?
Second.
May we request the Secretariat to please flash in the screen the two additional resolutions and the one first stage of bills. Yes. Abato City is raising his hands. We cannot hear you.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. If the good Parliamentary Floor Leader would allow, may I respectfully request her to also include in her amendments Bills number one to thirty-three of the that was that has already been filed in before the Secretary General, Mr. Speaker. We have noticed that the the bills started with Bills number thirty-four and these are the first bills that we are considering. We noticed that there are there should be some one Bills one to thirty-three that may have been omitted for the consideration of the Honorable Floor Leader, Mr. Speaker.
One minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
One minute suspension.
Mr. Speaker, I yield to the very articulate, very profound explanation of our dear Parliamentary Floor Leader. Thank you very much. I am not insisting anymore on my motion, of my request pala, the party's motion. Thank you.
Secretariat, please take note.
There's a standing motion, Mr. Speaker.
Yes. Are the are the members satisfied now with the presentation of the title of the proposed resolutions? So, there is a motion to amend the Order of Business to include resolutions, two resolutions and one first bill for first reading.
Sixteen. Sixteen. Sixteen bills.
Sixteen bills.
And there's a privilege hour also.
Yeah, sixteen bills for first stage and privilege hour. Is there any second? There being no objection, the motion is approved and the Order of Business is consequently amended.
Mr. Speaker, the first proposed resolution is Resolution number three. May we request the Secretariat to read the title and the authors, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of the first proposed resolution including the name of the authors and co-authors. Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to treat the resolution as a simple resolution and transfer it to the business for the day.
There is a motion to transfer proposed Resolution number zero-three to the business for the day. Is there any second? There being no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, the second proposed resolution is Resolution number thirty-four. May we request the Secretariat to read the title and the authors of the resolution.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title, the next proposed resolution including the name of the authors and co-authors.
Mr. Speaker.
Floor Leader.
I wish to move for the to treat it as a simple resolution and transfer it to the business for the day, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to refer proposed Resolution number thirty-four to the business for the day. It has been seconded. There being no objection, the motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, the next item is on the privilege hour. There are seven. There are seven who registered their wish to deliver a privileged speech today, Mr. Speaker. But please, may we request the those who are in the list to please keep the keep their speeches in a minimum so that it will be within just one hour, Mr. Speaker. The order is Minister MP Muhyair Iqbal, MP Abdullah Hashim, MP Amir Mawalil, MP Liza Alamiya, MP Eddie Ali, MP Muhammad Kelly Antao and Deputy Speaker Lanang Ali Junior.
They only have one hour, right? May timer ba tayo? Secretariat, next time, please prepare the timer for these purposes. We recognize the gentleman from Datuudin, Sinsoat, Magindano. Is there no pending legislation on this matter, sir?
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillahi rabbil alamin. Salatu was salaam wa laa asrafil mursalin. Sayyidina Muhammad wa ala alihi wasahbihi ajmain wa ba'ad. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, Deputy Speakers, Majority Floor Leaders, respective members of the BTA Parliament, friends, partners, stakeholders, ladies and gentlemen, again, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, I stand again today in this august hall to express what my heart has been longing to equibucket these past few days. My speech is entitled Convergence for the Future of the Bangsa Moro. Moro history is replete with the tears, blood and sweat of our people. This is culminated by the long years of armed struggles waged by our people against the colonizers and repressive forces of the Imperial Manila in quotation mark. Mindanao and Suluh have always been the battleground for centuries. I cannot cite any time, any instance in the past where our people had lived in real peace and tranquility. Our history is a history of wars. For decades, if not for centuries, this life-threatening situation of our people had been unknown to the outside world or kept under wraps by the national government. It was the carnage in Corridor, in Kabiti, known as Jabida massacre in March nineteen sixty-eight, that unfurled the curtain, allowing the whole world to know the bloody mess happening to our people. They have concluded beyond reasonable doubt that under the Filipino flag, they have no future. A year after, the Moro National Liberation Front was born with the strong support of the Organization of Islamic Cooperation or Conference or OIC and several Muslim states and leaders, especially the late Muammar Haropi of Libya. In nineteen seventy-six, the Tripoli Agreement was signed between the MLLEF and the Philippine Government. Without delving into the intricacies and complexities of the situation because it is a thing of the past or a water under the bridge, the signing of this agreement created a hiatus in the leadership of the MLLEF and its members. This later on led to the formation of the Moro Islamic Liberation Front under the leadership of the late Salamat Hasim, Allah irham. Indeed, this operation was terribly excruciating, tormenting and troublesome for those who have parted ways with someone so dear to you. At the time, more than our individual or group interest, there could be there couldn't be more supreme than that of the ideology based on Islam and of ensuring the best interest of the Bangsa Moro people. Since then, the two prongs took a separate journey but their pathways have never crossed. The spirit of Islamic Brotherhood and the pursuit of the common struggle for right to self-determination kept them fully aware that despite their differences, the higher interest of the Bangsa Moro people must always must always be supreme than any other considerations. Almighty Allah decreed that on September fifteen, two thousand twenty-two, the historical convergence of brothers happened after after four decades of separation. I am referring to the inaugural session of the BTA Parliament where all the key leaders of the MLLEF and MLLEF were present. Chairman Nurmishwarri, the main founder of the MLLEF, Chairman Muslim Insema and MLLEF Chairman Al-Hazmurat Ibrahim, all grace the occasion. The reunion was a celebration filled with tears, hugs and happy conversations with no trace of prejudice or hatred but only happiness and longingness. It is inded through that time heals all wounds. Allah, fahruh wa ta'ala, says in Surah Al-Hujrad, verse ten, and I quote, "The believers are nothing but brothers. So make settlement between your brothers and fear Allah that you may receive mercy," unquote. Muslims should endure and be patient with this brother Muslim in order to avoid conflicts and further misunderstanding. Surah Al-Anfal, verse forty-six, and I quote, "And obey Allah and His Messenger and do not dispute and thus lose courage and then your restraint will depart," and be patient. Indeed, Allah is with the patient, unquote. I know, dear colleagues, that you can help but notice that most leaders of the two prongs are already in the toiletages of their lives and we don't have enough time. I hope we are able to send a message to the young ones that relationship with our brothers will be will be put to test. Tests that are highly unimaginable to surpass. But at the end of the day, learn to forgive and remain steadfast in order to achieve your ultimate goal for the Muslim ummah. With this convergence, I see a ray of hope for the Bangsa Moro people. Allow me to quote one of the former US President Franklin Roosevelt's famous quotes. "We cannot always build a future for our youth but we can build our youth for the future," unquote. With this cooperation, we have shown our detractors that we are invincible, invincible. Our bond as brotherhood is our strength, not available to some scrappulous politicians. For one, we have unwavering support and loyalty of our people and to what the Holy Quran commands us as well as the practice of Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him. With this solidarity, Mr. Speaker, it will be very difficult for the external forces to crush, break or harm us. In fact, His Excellency President Ferdinand Marcos Junior is so proud that he cited in his speech yesterday before the United Nations General Assembly the success of the Philippine Government in forging peace and paths of cooperation that resulted in the success of the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Inananaw. Admittedly, Admittedly, people feel strong and secure in those societies and networks where there are less conflicts and more understanding among its leaders. Definitely, this will lead to faster growth of society and also leads to the realization of something bigger and better in this region. Solidarity and cohesiveness are the greatest blessings of Almighty Allah and the major elements of success in every respect of life. We should nurture and strengthen this for a brighter future, brighter tomorrow. With this convergence, we will work together to provide the future generations of what is best for them so that they will not suffer what their forefathers have suffered due to lack of education, extreme poverty, inequality, and injustice. I know that the road towards the realization of this dream is a bumpy one, which is full of trials and misgivings. We should always be reminded of Surah Al-Imran, verse one oh three, and I quote, "And hold firmly to the rope of Allah altogether and do not become divided, and remember the favor of Allah upon you, when you were enemies and He brought your hearts together and become, by His favor, brothers, and you were on the edge of the pit of fire and saved you from it." Thus Allah thus made clear to you these verses that you may be guided, unquote. My dear colleagues of this August body, let us remain to be at peace and solidarity with one another so that we will not put to waste the sacrifices of our fallen brothers and sister. Let us lend a helping hand in one another and continue in our pursuit towards our aspirations and claim all the deliverables of the government, various laws, and agreements for the Bangsa Moro people. Together, not as MLLE or MLLE alone, but as one brother, we shall reap all gains from the peace process for the betterment of the Bangsa Moro people. If there are problems that crop up from time to time, we'll handle them with the spirit of brotherhood and reconciliation. May Allah grant us the wisdom and courage to overcome whatever test ahead of us, insya Allah. Thank you, wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
One minute suspension. Gentleman from Pagalungan, Magindanao is recognized. Thank you, Mister Speaker. Inna alhamdulillah. Nahmaduhu wa nasta'inuhu wa nastaghfiru. Wa na'udzubillahi min shuru ri amhusina. Wa minsai ati a'mali na. Man yahdihi illahu fala mudillalah. Wa man yudlil fala haadiyalah. Wa shadualla ilaha illallah wahdahula syarikalah. Wa shaduanna muhammadan abduhu warasulu. Amma ba'ad. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. May the peace, mercy, and blessings of Allah be upon you all. Mister Speaker, my courtesies and greetings of peace to Speaker, Attorney Pangalian Balindong, Floor Leader, Attorney Sya Elayja Dumama Alba, Deputy Speakers, Deputy Floor Leaders, fellow honorable Members of the Parliament, and all those who are present. Mister Speaker, Allah says in the noble Quran, "Wadakir fa inna dzikra tam faul mu'minin." And remind, for indeed, the reminder benefits the believers. Thus I stand before you to remind this August body of an important matter, a matter of which we would not be here if not for its existence and promise, bi idnillah, by Allah's permission. Peace, ladies and gentlemen, honorable Members of this August body. We would not be here today, bi idnillah, if not for the choice of our leaders to pursue the path of peace. It is not an easy path as mentioned by our dear President Ferdinand Marcos Jr., but our leaders, after decades of struggle, chose this path, chose the path of compromise, cooperation, and dialogue. It is just befitting that we take the path of, that we take this path of peace that our elders have chosen and align ourselves with it, and Allah forbid not become an obstruction to it, wa liyayadubillah, and we seek refuge from Allah from that. It is also fitting to be reminded of this as we begin a new chapter of the BTA. Mister Speaker, due to Presidential Proclamation Number six seven five, series of two thousand four, we celebrate in every month of September the National Peace Consciousness Month. A month wherein this presidential proclamation seeks to, and I quote, "instill greater consciousness and understanding among the Filipino people on the comprehensive peace process, sustaining this institutional and popular support for this effort," end of quote. Mister Speaker, as stated in our mother law, it is also one of our general principles and policies to promote unity, peace, justice, and goodwill among all peoples. Mister Speaker, we also remind ourselves that not only did our leaders chose the path of peace, but also they chose the path of unity as well, as is perfected now in this August chamber. We remind ourselves that just last September fifteen, a historic inaugural session has transpired before us. It was His Excellency President Ferdinand Marcos Jr.'s first visit in the Bangsa Moro Government Center. It was His Excellency's affirmation of his support to the peace process and the baron. Not only that, what we have seen before our very eyes are leaders and elders in the struggle, side by side, pursuing the path of peace and unity. Mister Speaker, one of the greatest blessings which Allah gives to a servant is the blessing of safety, peace, and security in the society. The Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam said, "Whoever among you wakes up physically healthy, feeling safe and secure within himself, with food for the day, it is as if he acquired the whole world." Indeed, peace and the blessing of safety and security is very important in Islam, regardless of what misguided individuals or groups may portray. Mister Speaker, the Sharia seeks to preserve five: sound religious practice, life, sanity, the family, and personal and communal wealth. These five would not be preserved without the blessing of peace, safety, and security. Pious Muslims seek to apply their religion, but this cannot be done without knowledge. As Imam al-Bukhari, rahimahullah, said, "Knowledge precedes speech and action." But this knowledge cannot be obtained without the blessing of peace, safety, and security. Islam in the Muslim world flourished in the decades past due to long periods of peace, safety, and security. Jihad was established by some of those Muslim states, yes, but mostly as a means of self-defense and preservation of this peace, safety, and security, not as a platform for terror and chaos, as Islam seeks order and serenity. Indeed, terrorism, religious extremism, and religious innovation have instead further eroded this blessing and contributed to the decline of the Muslim world in general. Therefore, Mister Speaker, I encourage and remind myself and my fellow honorable colleagues as well the Bangsa Moro as a whole to help one another in doing good as Allah commanded, including the preservation of this peace that we are currently having right now. We must transform our society into a peace-loving, God-fearing, and law-abiding society. This must manifest in our policies, constituency works, dialogues, engagements, programs, and services. Mister Speaker, let us all walk the path of peace, unity, and cooperation. I ask Allah to guide us and guide our leaders to a straight path. Thank you, Mister Speaker. The gentleman from Tawi Tawi is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mister Speaker, fellow Members of Parliament, assalamualaikum. I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege as a colleague and member of this chamber and as a representative of the people that we all hold dear. I would like, Mister Speaker, to first of all congratulate you on your unanimous election as leader of our August body. This is the first time that such a phenomenon has happened in our young parliament. I doubt that such a display of solidarity and collective resolve happens very, very often, even in more, in other, more mature democracies. As you know, Mister Speaker, I do not take the floor very often, and this is the first time I am speaking plenary in this particular iteration of our parliament. Alam dinang marami sa inyo, bahagi ako ng minority nung nakaraang administrasyon. Ngunit pinili kong sumapi sa mayorya at ihalal kayo bilang pinuno ng pag, sa pagkakataon ito, ng dahil sa ilang paninindigan. Mister Speaker, una, para sa akin, hindi lang slogan ang One Bangsa Moro, One BTA. I consider it, I consider it my duty to live out with my actions and principles the words that come out of my mouth. And I say nowadays without pretense and in utmost sincerity. Mister Speaker, naniniwala ako na kung hindi magkakaisa ang BTA, maaantala ang paglalakbay ng buong Bangsa Moro tungo sa ating mga adikain. Mister Speaker, we tread more quickly, more efficiently, and with greater purpose if we all look towards the same horizon. Ikalawa, Mister Speaker, in my short time so far as a member of this parliament, I have come to know many from across the political aisle. At bagaman minsan may mga di pagkakaintindihan, bagaman minsan may tensyon sa mga usapan, namulat ako na nitong, nitong mga nakaraang taon, magkakahanay ang pangarap natin para sa Bangsa Moro. Most of us have the same dreams, and most of us have the same intentions, to see our people flourish, to have the next generation wake up not to the sound of crushing artillery or the scent of gunpowder, but to peaceful, quiet mornings where they have food on the table, enjoy laughter with their loved ones, and pursue a future brimming with human potential. Mister Speaker, gusto kong ideen sa lahat ng nandito na misski nung mga panahong nasa minority ako, hindi ako, hindi ko nakalimutan na ito ang mga pangarap at intention, at intention ng nakakarami sa atin. And know that we stand solid as One BTA. I will continue to default to this faith in my colleagues. We may wear different and consider ourselves allies of personalities, but here, here in this chamber, Mister Speaker, in this land of our forefathers, I firmly believe that we stand united in our dreams. And so allow me to preempt, preempt myself, Mister Speaker. There will be times that I and some colleagues from the former minority will speak passionately about issues dear to our hearts. When we ask, for example, for equipment for our hospitals, for extra beds in their wards, or when we take positions about issues close to our hearts. May mga pagkakataon po, Mister Speaker, na ilalatag namin ang buong puso namin sa bulwagang ito. Mister Speaker, sa panahong ito, ang hiling namin, huwag sana natin itong masamain. Alalahanin natin na magsas, na nagsasalita kami hindi para sa sarili namin, pero para sa One Bangsa Moro. Sa mga taong bayang, pinagsisilbihan nating lahat. When we ask questions, when we cannot help but raise our voices, remember, remember, please, that all we are doing is pleading the case for the people who are not here, people who need care and medicine, and shelter, and loss that will make their burdens a little lighter, their lives a bit better. Mister Speaker, we plead only for the people that we all, as one body, collectively represent. Mister Speaker, this is what it means to be a parliament. Tandaan natin, Mister Speaker, na ito ang ginusto nating uri ng pamahalaan. We demanded this parliamentary setup in the BOL, and the one thread that is common among all functioning parliaments around the world is that on the floor, every voice is heard. Sa House of Lords at sa House of Commons ng Inglaterra, sa bawat Senado at Kongreso, sa buong mundo, Mister Speaker, diskurso ang pamamaraan. Minsan nagdi-dibate, minsan nagkakataasan ang boses, minsan may nahahablado na iiyak, pero lagi napapakinggan ang lahat, Mister Speaker. Hindi ba ganito naman, mag-usap ang tunay na magkakahanay, ang tunay na magkakaibigan, ang tunay na magkakapatid? Mister Speaker, I am confident that in this united BTA, we will treat each other as brothers and sisters worth listening to. And through this, through listening to each other, trusting each other's intention in forging our loss and resolution in the fires of debate, I look forward to building a more inclusive, more progressive Bangsa Moro region, Mister Speaker. Again, Mister Speaker, congratulations. I commit to supporting, I commit myself to supporting the BTA leadership under you and under our honorable Chief Minister, knowing that your success means the success of this entire chamber, which, Mister Speaker, redounds likewise to the success of our region and our people. Maraming salamat, Mister Speaker, at maraming salamat po.
The gentleman from, the lady from Basilan is recognized.
Bismillah, rahmanir rahim. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Mister Speaker, our memories always find their way to the work that we do in making decisions, both personal and political. What always comes to mind is a memory that will inevitably define our position or course of action. These memories serve as reminders of what is important to us, not only as public servants who make policy decisions on a daily basis, but as individuals who share in the struggles and triumphs of the Bangsa Moro communities that raised us into the people we are today. As we begin the work that awaits us in the next three years, I call upon each and every one of us to remember what brought us into the halls of this parliament and what we bring with us from beyond these walls built on the backs of our people. The memories that first come to mind as we face our daily tasks are a sobering reminder of who we are and whom we dedicate our work to. What memories do we remember when we work? Who do we remember? Ano po 'yung naaalala natin kapag nandito tayo sa loob ng session hall? Ano po 'yung naaalala natin kapag nagtatrabaho na tayo at nagdi-dibate? It would serve us very well to remember that the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao was established as a response to our people's assertion of the right to self-determination and our just falls for transitional justice and reconciliation. Everything we must, we do must be an unequivocal affirmation of these things. of these things. Otherwise, we are setting ourselves and our communities up for failure, a failure we cannot afford, especially given the constraints we have to work with for better or for worse. In 2019, when many of us first took our seats as members of parliament, we knew for a fact that we only had three years, tatlong taon lang, to build and reinforce the legal and practical foundation on which the Bangsa Moro Regional Government will be built. We had our sights set on seven legislative priorities, namely, the creation of the offices necessary for the BARM bureaucracy, the Administrative Code, the Civil Service Code, Education Code, Electoral Code, the IP Code, Internal Revenue Code, and the Local Government Code. During the pandemic that plagued the first three years of our political transition, we were tired to fulfill our duties, despite the unprecedented challenges we have had to face in the process. The political transition is already difficult enough as it is, even without a global pandemic that shocked even the richest nations into a standstill. Through our collective efforts, we managed to deliver goods and services with a sense of urgency and accountability to our communities. We did well, and yet we also know that it is far from enough. We tried to do our best, the BARM government, pero alam natin kulang pa rin. We only managed to pass half of the priority bills. Many of them filed halfway into our term, but failed to move forward in the legislative process. Mr. Speaker, it is now 2022, and in the month of September, mag-o-October na po tayo. And the parliament is once again made up of presidential appointees with another three years of working on the success of the BARM's political transition ahead of us. If there is anything that the first three years of the political transition has taught us, it is that there is never enough time to do everything that we want to do for our people. Not when we have spent our entire lives imagining what we can and must be done for the Bangsa Moro. But what our people demand, however, are results. Ito po ang sinasabi ng mga tao, ng mga constituents natin sa baba. Resulta ang gusto nila. We cannot waste our time on mere imagining when there is always work to be done. We cannot waste our time on mere conversation when there is always action that must be taken. Our people demand to feel that our struggle has begun to bear fruit and to know that the time for harvest is near. We cannot reap a full harvest if we refuse to engage in the difficult work of tending to the dreams that we have planted together, making sure that our dreams take root in a way that runs deep and spreads wide across the land that we have fought for. We do not have the luxury of time, fellow members of parliament. We are indeed blessed to stand in these halls to represent our people, but we are working on borrowed time. We have spoken about our people's needs and struggles at length during our committee hearings, our speaking engagements, and parliament sessions. But our people's struggles are not mere talking points for us to discuss and debate about as if we have time that stretches infinitely in front of us. Our lived realities are not mere teaching moments that we share with a willing audience. Our lived realities are reminders of what must change for the better if we are to deliver the promise of autonomy and self-determination. Our memory must be unflinching and uncompromising if we are to look at the future with a clear vision of what we can and must do for the Bangsa Moro. Every time we walk into the halls of this parliament, let us remember what the past three years were like, what we have accomplished and what we could have done better, what we have delivered and what we could have provided sooner. The past three years prior to our recent appointment into the parliament is something that we must sear into our collective memory. It is what we hold in our hands and carry in our hearts as we stand in the halls of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. And the weight we carry must always be unbearable if we are genuinely to represent the people whom we have committed to serve. Otherwise, if the burden feels light, then maybe we are not here for the same reasons at all. Kung ang feeling natin ay hindi naman mabigat 'yung trabaho ng pagiging miembro ng Bangsa Moro Parliament, that means hindi po magkapareho ang rason kung bakit nandito tayo. Transitional justice and reconciliation is at the core of our people's struggle for autonomy and self-determination. Its importance to the Bangsa Moro is such that the first section under RA 11054, uh, Article on Basic Rights, is devoted to transitional justice. In it, the parliament is expected to commit as it works to enact a TJ mechanism to address the legitimate grievances of the Bangsa Moro people and the indigenous peoples. So hindi lang Bangsa Moro people, including IPs, such as historical injustices, human rights violations, and marginalization through unjust dispossession of territorial and proprietary rights and customary land tenure. The members of the previous parliament recognized and acknowledged this important task. The Bangsa Moro Human Rights Commission was, in fact, the first office created by an act of parliament, given its indispensable role in fulfilling the human rights component of TJR until a law establishing the TJR mechanism is passed. This commitment to TJR also extends into the process of drafting the priority codes, such as the Bangsa Moro Education Code, which carries a provision to uphold and affirm the historical identity narratives and aspirations of the Bangsa Moro people. There were three resolutions that were passed in relation to TJR measures, namely Resolution 56, which called for the creation of a National Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Commission for the Bangsa Moro, and the formulation and implementation of a Transitional Justice and Reconciliation Program at the national level. Wala pa po hanggang ngayon. Resolution 58, which calls for the creation of a Regional TJR Commission in the BARM, and Resolution 62, which requires all ministries and offices to annually commemorate the anniversary of the Jabida Massacre on March 18, as part of the regional government's efforts towards transitional justice. But ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Speaker, resolutions are not laws, and resolutions do not have budget allocations. It is for this reason, Mr. Speaker, that I have drafted previously in the first, uh, BTA and intend to refile all the bills that I have submitted in the previous parliament with respect to the transitional justice, including the Internally Displaced Persons Rights Bill. It is my hope that we can work together to enact these bills into law, thus securing regular appropriations for TJR programs that are necessary in making TJR a part of the people's everyday life in the Bangsa Moro. Mr. Speaker, I have mentioned earlier that we are working on borrowed time, but we also need to remember that we are working with limited resources. The Black Grant that currently provides funding for a huge bulk of the regional budget is not forever. Wala pong forever. Sa pag-ibig, wala rin forever sa Black Grant. And the Madonna's ruling is set to have an impact on the programs and projects that we'll be implementing in coordination with local government units across the region. There are no surprises here. Dapat hindi tayo mabigla. Which is why we have no excuse to be unprepared in facing the changes and the challenges that await us in the future. There is no excuse for us not to do our due diligence given these shifts in public funding and spending. And we need to be ready and self-sufficient once these changes happen. We need to take steps in order to ensure that the BARM will be sufficient in the soonest possible time. Para po akong nagmamakaawa, uh, parang 'yung mga climate change activists saying there is no more time. Wala na po tayong panahon. Ang Black Grant ay hindi po forever. By 2025, kailangan pong maging self-sufficient ng BARM. And so we need to work on this. This is what it means to be a federal parliamentary system. And this is the essence of a government that embodies our people's right to autonomy and self-determination. Now, that the BARM now exists as part of the national political landscape is for sure a step towards fulfilling the highest hopes and aspirations of our ancestors, but it does not stop there. We cannot stop here. We cannot afford to stop. Not when the Bangsa Moro people are still dreaming of a better future. We cannot slip, walk, naglalakad na tulog, our way into a future where just and lasting peace is a reality shared by all of us. We must work, and I look forward to working every single day in the next three years with all of you, with memories of our people's suffering pushing me to be a better parliament member, and with the dreams of our youth inspiring me to build a better future with every Bangsa Moro and for every Bangsa Moro. Mr. Speaker, together, we can do all this and more. Maraming salamat po. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
The gentleman from Sultan Kudarat is recognized. Ah, yeah, the gentleman from Tawi Tawi is recognized. Think you only have, uh, both of you, you only have fifteen minutes. Please share the time remaining.
Bismillah. Walhamdulillah. Wassalamu ala rasulillah. Wa ala alihi wasabi asma'in amabad. Awwal bilab, Chief Minister Ahud Ibrahim Alhaj. Distinguished speaker Ali Pangalan Balindong. Deputy speakers, floor leader, attorney, siya, Elijah, Lumama Alba. Deputy floor leaders, esteemed colleagues, other officers and staff of the parliament, Secretary General Professor Rabi Angkal, members of the secretariat, guests, ladies and gentlemen. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala wa barakatuh.
Mr. Speaker, I rise on a matter of personal and collective privilege to speak before you today to stress a very critical point at this, as this August body moves forward in the attainment of the Bangsa Moro dream. And that point is unity. More specifically, the heart of the Bangsa Moro unity. History does not repeat itself. We repeat history. Let us just get that out of the way at the very outset. We have been held back by this unity for so long that it became unclear why we have been divided in the first place. Going through the pages of history, I have realized three things. One, awal uma or nation is unstoppable when it is united. Two, external forces are incessantly at work to divide us. And three, we have repeatedly fallen to the strap and tactic. Unless we learn from the past, we are bound to repeat it. I still talk to the young generations today about the golden age of the Bangsa Moro struggle. A time when we were at our peak as a nation, despite not having any form of autonomy back then. We were forced to reconvene because we were fighting for a cause bigger than ourselves. It was an amazing era to behold. The Philippine government recognized it, and the world was in awe of this phenomenon. Internal books, articles, and pub- and publications were written about how the brave Moro men of the Philippines have been engaged in jihad for centuries in pursuit of the God-given right of self-determination. How we were never conquered and how we have achieved so much with sheer determination and faith. That was only possible because it was clear to each and every one of us what we were fighting for, and we were united upon that cause. A cause that has not been contaminated by any political interests or political agenda. It was jihad. In every sense of the word, a struggle for the sake of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. Somehow, somewhere, along the way, we faltered. We lost our footing and started to dwindle. But I'm not here to linger on the faults of the past. Rather, I only wish to highlight the lessons we can extract from it so we don't repeat our mistakes, so that we can recognize the pitfalls as we traverse this new chapter of the Bangsa Moro history and build a legacy that the future generations inherit. We cannot deny that the unity of the Bangsa Moro movements had its ups and downs throughout history. And I have been a part of that tumultuous past. That is why it brings tears of joy and so much gratitude to my heart to see the Bangsa Moro leaders united here once again. There is just no word to describe how happy I am to see our beloved great Bangsa Moro leaders of the MNLF and MLF united as brothers. Alhamdulillah, Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala allowed me to live long enough to witness this blessed moment and to actually be a part of this. I could honestly say that this is the highlight of my career. This moment is now etched in history that the future generations can look back, can look back to and say, our great leaders have chosen unity so we can reap the benefits of it today. Allahu akbar. Allahu akbar. Allahu akbar. But how can we keep this unity? I remind myself and my esteemed colleagues in this August body of the Surah Al Imran, verse 103 in the Quran, which states, "And I thought, and hold firmly to the rope of Allah altogether, and do not become divided. And remember the fable of Allah upon you, when you were enemies, and He brought your hearts together, and you became, by His favor, brothers," unquote. I am amazed by the imagery depicted in the Quran on unity. Allah Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala describes it as like holding on to a rope. A rope is always connected to something by its nature and purpose. By analogy, our unity is like a rope linked to a greater cause. It is not just unity for the sake of unity. We are uniting on something that transcends nations, tribes, politics, and our very existence. We are uniting to materialize the Bangsa Moro cause for the sake of Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. That is, after all, the very essence of jihad. That is what differentiates our self-determination to all other revolutions in the history of mankind. Our identity is rooted within our very spirituality, not just in our DNA, skin color, geography, or tribe. Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, and I said, and I quote, "The parable of the believers in their affection, mercy, and compassion for each other is that of a single body. When any part of it aches, the whole body becomes restless," unquote. This prophetic tradition really brings the concept of unity home. Unity does not mean much. Unity does not mean much if we are indifferent to the sufferings of our Bangsamoro brothers and sisters. Regardless of ethnicity or tribe, whether you are sama, tausug, maranao, maginnao, badjau, etc., we are part of a single body. The pain of my brother is my own pain, and I will not rest until the pain of my brothers is eased. The first kalifa of the Muslims, Abu Bakal Siddiq, Kero Lahu Anhu, said, and I quote, "Taking pains to remove the pains of others is the true essence of generosity," unquote. That is the essence of the Bangsamoro brotherhood and sisterhood. Alhamdulillah, I have felt that kind of brotherhood among us in the first BTA, and we have nurtured that relationship even with the so-called majority and minority. Today, we have declared one and united Bangsamoro transition authority because our great Bangsamoro leaders have come together in unity. I see that the next generation of Bangsamoro leaders are not just following the footsteps of their fathers, but are actually sitting among us right now within the four corners of this hall. The sons and daughters have inherited the amana or trust of leadership from their parents, alhamdulillah. And what better way to pass the baton and set an example than to show them that unity and making peace among us is the way to go? What better legacy is there to give than the guidance of unity? This is the epitome of parenthood. To the next generation here in this August body, if I may give an advice to all of you, I would only echo the verse of the Quran, "Hold firmly to the rope." Do not let go. Bite on it with your moral, with your moral teeth if you have to. Just do not let go and hold on together as one family. Your parents and your elders and those that have come before you have sacrificed their lives, their blood, and everything they could offer so that a future where the Bangsamoro identity could finally thrive would be in your hands. Protect it and nurture it and never be divided again. Wabilahita'ifat walhidaya. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala. Wabarokatuh.
So, uh, you are yielding MP Lanang Ali Jr. So, Majority Floor Leader, I think there are no more, uh... Ah, yeah, I'm sorry. The gentleman from the special geographic area is recognized. You take the right rostrum.
Sukran, Mister Speaker. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Alhamdulillah, wabina asta'il. Wassalamu'ala, srapi'anbiya iwal mursalin. Towar bilab, Chief Minister, Honorable Ahud Alhaj Murad Ibrahim. To our honorable speaker, deputy speakers, honorable members of the Bangsamoro Parliament, ladies and gentlemen. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala. Wabarokatuh. After navigating boundless seas of turbulent waves infested with overran sharks and crocodiles, I successfully overcome the challenges of life lying ahead my career path as a member of the late MILF, first by German, Gatali Japhar's political staff, which he assigned in the political segment of our country. I am greatly honored to be with you this afternoon as a new fight member of this honorable and prestigious body, the Bangsamoro Parliament. It started more than two decades ago when the first by German asked or commanded me to run for political position in the municipality. As municipal councillor in the Christian-dominated municipality of Libungan, North Kutabato, I unequivocally accepted with yes the command to run in that position. At the immediate opportunity, I ran as municipal councillor in Libungan, North Kutabato. I lost, and I repeated. In next chance, I was again in vain. But my pro-licensurens never gave up. It was my belief, the stranger will not... The stranger will lose in tracking coinciding with the darkest night of the period of jihad peace, Abiilah. In the third chance, I succeeded and become my tender years of political career blessed with victories because I won in three consecutive terms as councillor, later as senior councillor in the Christian majority town of Libungan with a simple and one single mission, and that is to deliver the peace. I stepped upward in the provincial slate of North Kutabato as independent board member, and I won in that Christian majority province. I continued finishing my three consecutive terms as provincial board member in the same I triumphed. In the making and shaping of the Bangsamoro Basic Law, now Bangsamoro Organic Law, we led our comrades in the struggle in many rallies on the strait of our provinces, cities, and municipalities, calling our authorities to give chance to the Bangsamoro aspiration for self-determination and peace. We led the inclusion of the petition in barangay to the BARM. We have also led groups, join organizations, and participated in poros and gatherings for the passage of the BBL, now BOL. We have gone as far as Manila many times lobbying our senators and congressmen to enact the... enact the version of the BBL, now BOL. Mister Speaker, I express thanks to the honorable Raissa Escher-Dury, now Minister of the Ministry of Social Services and Development, Honorable Nagib Sinarimbo, the current Minister of the Ministry of Interior and Local Government, and Attorney Muhammad Jamal Gidokus, and whether they are around or not, who extended us legal assistance while working for the inclusion of the special geographic area to the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao. Mister Speaker, I brought four cartoons of petition from North Kutabato to Commune Central Office during the first trip of my weekly travel to Manila from October 2018 to February 14, 2019. Hanggang February 14 po, dahil yun po ang pag-declare, nagkatompo na araw ng mga puso ang pag-declare ng panalo ng 63 barangay doon sa Nungod Kutabato. We are watching for the result of the plebiscite for inclusion in Commune. I spend here my personal resources without asking from outside sources for transportation, hotel, accommodation, and others. Mister Speakers, there were four dead barangays that filed petition for inclusion being contiguous to the existing 39 barangays that voted yes during the 2001 plebiscite. Out of them, 20 were accepted and 20 were denied due to non-established continuity. Consequently, and after a two-part plebiscite on January 21, 2019, and on February 6, 2019, where there were held, 63 barangays favored the inclusion to the BARM. They were officially turned over to the BARM on November 20, 2019. That was the founding birth of the special geographic area, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, the Honorable Chief Minister issued an executive order, number 001 Series of 2020, and signed on January 27, 2020, creating the Special Geographic Area Development Coordinating Office. I was appointed on June 30, 2020 as administrator of the office in concurrence to my then-position as the graduating provincial board member of North Kutabato. On the same day, the area coordinate cluster coordinators of 63 barangay of... were also appointed with administrator and area cluster coordinators along with the staff man, the office created for the AJA. Mister Speaker, we started our first year of operation in AJA in 2020. Our main function is coordination. The special geographic area becomes simulated to the local government unit lower than municipalities and province. We were in a smooth sailing with an unclouded horizon. We rendered very every service we can afford to our people. We embarked in building roads, barangay halls, health centers, cobalt courts, warehouses with solar dryers, and etc. We surprisingly converted our stagnant surroundings into full-blown developing communities of the residents and visitors expressed pride on to the Bangsamoro. In the early part of 2021, Mister Speaker, a persecution more by publicity struck my career way, but it only gave me inspiration that alhamdulillah and rebel and trial in life, I survived the political masquerade. It rather become a pleasant perfume progress in my favor. Otherwise, I could not have been with you today in this prestigious, honorable, and historic assembly of honorable ladies and gentlemen now enjoying the fruits of our Mujahideen blood, tears, and sweets. My heart is crying as I pronounce this word, and I remember my late superior in the struggle, the martyr, Honorable Gatali Jafar, the first by German of the MILF. We must equate every service we are rendering to each every foundation where our office was laid, such as the blood, tears, and sweets of our martyred brothers and sisters. On October 28, 2020, the Bangsamoro Administrative Code was enacted by the Bangsamoro Parliament. At the first instance of our receiving news on it, we rejoice with reverberation towards the sky because it contained provisions strengthening our office into Special Geographic Area Development Authority. But this sad moment came to us on August 9, 2021, where on June 30, 2021, our appointment as workers in the AJA were denied renewals, meaning we were terminated en masse. Our helpless staff and myself continued serving our clientele in voluntary capacity because we believe that it is the gains of the peace process. The predicament was felt now only by us workers, but much by our citizenry residing in the AJA. We were like chicks of a chicken left by their mother in the wilderness without someone to care and without a shelter. It was an addendum of our worry to the electorate of the AJA because our local politician treated us non-member of their constituents. Mister Speaker, the then-bys governor, Honorable Lala Talini Mendoza of North Kutabato, who is now the governor, feel it indispensable to produce representative from the AJA to a membership in the Bangsamoro Parliament. And consequently, I was endorsed by the Sanggunan Panalawigan of Province of Kutabato. This is the reason you can see my presence in your midst. Let me convey to you, my colleague, including Honorable Chief Minister, that hours, that on similar occasion, before and after hour of taking the OPA Prosecretary, Honorable Carlito Galvez Jr., called my attention, emphasizing the 63 barangay or special geographic area is a special concern of His Excellency, President Perdina Ramalis Marcos Jr. This means we are under close watch by our highest leadership on the matter of the AJA. His Excellency had probably heard the voices of our citizenry shouting for remedy on the interregnum of management and concern from the regional leadership. Mister Speaker, allow me to say that my gratitude to the following persons that I am thanking them from the bottom of my heart. Namely, North Kutabato Governor, Honorable Emilio Lala Zetalin Mendoza, Office of the Presidential Assistant on Peace, Reconciliation, Unity, Honorable Carlito J. Galvez, Interim Chief Minister, Honorable Ahud Alhaj Murad B. Ibrahim, Member of the Parliament, Senior Minister, Honorable Abdurrahman Akwa, Minister of Public Work, Honorable Eduardo Yugera, and most of all, the President of the Philippine Excellency, President Ramalis Marcos, for favoring, assisting, recommending, and appointing me as in to this prestigious position I am holding. Finally, Mister Speaker, and foremost, may I have this opportunity to relay and request your considerate hearts and minds, especially to the Honorable Chief Minister, the prayer of our people in the special geographic area for an immediate and effective implementation of the provision concerning the Special Geographic Area Development Authority in the Bangsamoro Administrative Code, which has already been long overdue. Secondly, may this honorable chamber consider the passage of a resolution that may lead to the future enactment of a bill creating the eight cluster barangay into a full-pledged municipality. Mister Speaker and my colleague, let us be part in this legislative chamber working as legislator in advocating, advancing rural governance along with the search for peace, development, and unity. Towar dear leaders, show us the light, and we will follow. Wabilahita'ifat walhidaya. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala. Wabarokatuh.
Uh, we will proceed, Floor Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move to suspend for ASAR prayer, fifteen minutes.
Session is suspended for fifteen minutes.
...
Floor leader, what is next in the order of business?
Next order of business, Mr. Speaker is the first stage of bills. BTA Parliament Bill number twenty-nine. May we request the Secretariat to please read the title of the bill?
The Secretariat is so directed.
Second, uh, bill is BTA Parliament Bill number thirty. May request the Secretariat to read the title of the bill.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title the next, uh, proposed bill.
Third, BTA Parliament Bill number thirty-one.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of BTA Parliament. The title of BTA Parliament Bill number thirty-one.
The fifth, uh, number four, BTA Parliament Bill number thirty-two.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of BTA Parliament Bill number thirty-two.
Fifth bill, BTA Parliament Bill number thirty-three.
Secretariat is so directed.
Sixth bill, BTA Parliament number thirty-four. The sec- may we request the Secretariat, Mr. Speaker?
Secretariat is so requested.
Seventh bill, BTA Parliament number thirty-five. May we request the Secretary to read-
The Secretariat is so directed.
Eight bill, BTA Parliament number thirty-six.
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of BTA Parliament Bill number thirty-six.
Ninth bill, BTA Parliament number thirty-seven. May we request the Secretary to read the title of the bill?
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of, uh, BTA Parliament Bill number thirty-seven.
Tenth bill, BTA Parliament number thirty-eight. May we request the Secretary to read the title of the bill?
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of BTA Parliament Bill number thirty-eight.
Eleventh bill, BTA Parliament number thirty-nine. May we request Secretary to read the co- title of the bill?
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of BTA Parliament Bill number thirty-nine.
Twelfth bill, BTA Parliament number forty. May we request the Secretary to read the title of the bill?
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of BTA Parliament Bill number forty.
Thirteenth bill, BTA Parliament number forty-one. May request the Sec- Secretary to read the title of the bill?
The Secretariat is so requested to read the title of BTA Parliament Bill number forty-one.
Forty bill, BTA Parliament number, bill number forty-two. May request the Secretary to read the title of the bill?
The Secretariat is so requested.
Fifteenth bill, BTA Parliament number forty-three. May we request the Secretary to read the title of the bill?
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of BTA Parliament Bill number forty-three.
Sixteenth and final bill, BTA Parliament number, bill number forty-four. May we request the Secretary to pe- please read the title of the bill?
The Secretariat is directed to read the title of BTA Parliament Bill number forty-four. The secretariat is directed to read the title of BTA Parliament Bill number forty-four.
Mr. Speaker, I would like also to manifest that there are members of parliament who have not received copies uh, of the bills now, um, previ- previously read. Uh, may we request the secretary to please timely, timely furnish copies of the bills before, um, members of the parliament?
The secretary at least take note.
Mr. Speaker, MP Ampatuan wishes to be recognized.
The lady from Magindanao is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, just a manifestation, Mr. Speaker, because early on, uh, we have a discussion about the word government of the day. And for the benefit of those who were not present this morning, and for the record, Mr. Speaker, I would like to request the majority floor leader to exactly define, to define exactly what is the composition of the government of the day. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, based on Bangsa-Moro Administrative Act number thirteen or the Bangsa-Moro Administrative Code, a government of the day is defined as under section four, the cabinet headed by the chief minister and composed of other ministers appointed by him, majority of whom shall also be members of the parliament that exercise, exercises executive authority in the Bangsa-Moro government. The government of the day during the transition period is the Moro Islamic Liberation Front-led majority with the participation of the Moro National Liberation Front and other members of the Bangsa-Moro parliament who voted for the latter's leadership therein, Mr. Speaker.
So, in that case, Mr. Speaker, um, I think there was a clarification earlier by MP Romeo Sema about, about the government of the day, so um, the, I think the explanation earlier is different from what has been explained right now, so we will follow the, uh, administrative, uh, administrative code because the, the line of discussion earlier is about the majority and the minority. So, we are saying that since there is no majority and minority any, anymore, and therefore, everybody is part of the government of the day. But on the contrary, because it's defined in the administrative code, therefore, the government of the day is limited to what has been defined in the code. Thank you.
Jually noted. Yeah, uh-
Mr. Speaker-
What is that, a manifestation or?
Uh, just to, uh, Mr. Speaker, just to clarify what has tran- uh, just transpired, Mr. Speaker. So, to put it more bluntly, uh, Mr. Speaker, may I request the floor leader to clearly define now what is meant, just for a short statement. What is meant by the government of the day as mentioned to be the author of these bills that are now-
Can we set another date for that, for discussion, uh, definition and, uh-
Mr. Speaker, I'm not here to argue, Mr. Speaker, this is not to argue. Just to clarify so that we can, uh, finally, uh, put this matter to rest.
Mr. Speaker, I, I don't think the definition needs more explanation, it is very clear.
Please, please. Please, Miss, Madam Spee- uh, Madam Floor Leader. Uh, Madam, uh, Madam Floor Leader, I'm not here to argue with the speaker. I just want you to put it quite more straightly, uh, plain and straight that what, this is what is meant by the government of the day.
Yes, uh, so I will repeat. Government of the day as defined under the Bangsa-Moro Administrative Code refers to the cabinet headed by the chief minister and composed of other ministers appointed by him, majority of whom shall also be members of the parliament that exercises executive authority in the Bangsa-Moro government. The government of the day during the transition period is the Moro Islamic Liberation Front-led majority with the participation of the Moro National Liberation Front and other members of the Bangsa-Moro parliament who voted for the latter's leadership therein.
So, Mr. Speaker, just to put it plainly, for purposes of transition, it, uh, which applies to our case, it is the MLF-led BTA with the Moro National Liberation Front and everybody who voted for the, to be precise, the speaker. So, inasmuch, in this case, there is no one who voted, uh, for anybody else except our dear beloved speaker, so it will refer now to everybody.
Mr. Speaker, I agree that that is the case right now, that is the status quo right now, but we are not, uh, in the position to know what will happen in the next months, years. So, thank you for that, um-
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Let's stop, uh, debating on that and let's proceed with the, uh, referrals. And, uh, second stage pa. Yeah, on the unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we now move to unfinished business. Yesterday, we suspended discussion on the proposed resolution number twenty-eight. Um, may I, based on, uh, the caucus earlier this morning, uh, may I move to to terminate the period of interpolation and open, and move to open the period of amendment, Mr. Speaker? Mr. Speaker?
There is a motion to, uh, terminate the period of interpolation and open the period of amendment. Thirty-second, being seconded, there being objection, the motion is approved.
So, Mr. Speaker, MP Bay Intan, uh, Ampatuan followed by MP Mualil and MP Lim?
My, my proposed amendment has been submitted already to the secretariat. My proposed amendment had been sub- submitted already to the secretariat. We're running out, out of time, please proceed with the proposals.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Um, on section two, rule three, um, we insert the provision of, of a paragraph that, uh, says the Wali shall open the inaugural session of the parliament through the ceremonial banging of the gong and his declaration of the opening of the regular session of the parliament.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Wala. Wala. I, I can send the ano, ikapit to the secretariat. I can send. I can send the ano. Kailang kren. Pedy, pedy ko na may sense pa na ba? Tada, kutsu mo. Oo. Patinga na. Sayo? May send yer ma? Send na.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, next is, uh, on section three, election of the deputy speakers and other officers of the parliament. Uh, we insert the word, uh, Mr. Speaker, the seven deputy speakers that represents Bangsa-Moro constituencies. That's the, uh, proposed, uh, additional phrase, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we have a counter-proposal, uh, but we do not accept the portion about representing Bangsa-Moro constituencies. The counter-proposal will be the eight deputy speakers.
So, we are changing seven to eight, Mr. Speaker?
Yes.
That's a good news, Mr. Speaker. But, uh, how about the phrase represent, that represents, uh, Bangsa-Moro constituencies?
Mr. Speaker, we do not accept that, uh, the deputy speak- because it will, if it will mean that it is only the deputy speakers that represent the Bangsa-Moro constituency, so we do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, actually, I'm trying to find a right word that would describe who are the eight people, Mr. Speaker. That's my intention actually, Mr. Speaker, but nonetheless, um, I would accept that. I, I would, uh, also propose that somebody, if somebody can think about a proper a phrase that would describe the eight people, that would be better, Mr. Speaker. Next, Mr. Speaker is- Number nine, yeah, on number nine, section four, rule four, the speaker, which is, uh, the functions, uh, among the functions of the speaker, uh, I propose that, uh, we include, uh, the two functions mentioned in section twenty-five, artis- article seven of the BOL, uh, and I rephrase it, which is that present to the chief minister every bill before signing into law and letter B, submit to the president and to the Congress of the Philippines a certified true copy of all laws and resolutions approved by the parliament.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Floor leader, is that not found in some other provisions of the rules? I think that's found in some other provisions of the rules.
I don't think, uh, it's part of, uh, other provision, I, I wasn't able to read it. It is in the BOL, but not in the rules.
Proceed.
Um, next, Mr. Speaker is on the deputy speaker, uh, functions. Um, I propose additional, um, serve as ex-official member to all committees with the right to vote except when he or she is elected as chair, co-chair, vice chair of the parliamentary and statutory committees.
We partially accept, Mr. Speaker, with the counter-proposal to, uh, make a full stop um, after the word vote. Okay, so it will read serve as ex-official member to all committees with the right to vote, Mr. Speaker.
So, no, no to the exception.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Next, Mr. Speaker is- Okay. Uh, proposed amendment on rule four, section four, conduct obsessions. Um, brutal to. Plenary sessions shall commence at nine o'clock in the morning, Mondays through Fridays of the second and third, uh, second uh, and third week of the month except when the parliament decides otherwise.
We, um, we have a counter-proposal, Mr. Speaker. Plenary sessions shall commence at one o'clock in the afternoon on Mondays through Thursdays of the second and third week. Thursdays? Thursdays? Mondays through Thursdays on the second and third week of the month.
I think everybody is affected, let's table that, Mr. Chair, uh, we-
One-minute suspension.
Yes.
Session suspended for one minute.
We have a counter-proposal, Mr. Speaker, that plenary sessions shall commence at one o'clock in the afternoon on Mondays through Thursdays of the third and fourth week of the month, except when the parliament decides otherwise. The speaker shall open, conduct, and close the sessions.
I accept, Mr. Speaker. That's a counter-proposal, I have a proposal, you have a counter-proposal, and therefore, I need to accept it.
One o'clock, one o'clock.
Um, next, Mr. Speaker is on section two, rule eight, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, on the same matter as yung kanina.
What is that? Is that a point of order, point of clarification or? You cannot interrupt interpolation. The, uh, period of amendment or in the period of- Your period, the period of amendment, you cannot interrupt it unless it is a point of order or a point of clarification.
Mr. Then, point of order, Mr. Speaker.
Okay.
Uh, the point of order here, Mr. Speaker, is that if we may allow uh, debates or amendments to particular provisions, one provision at a time, so that maybe perhaps some people would like to, uh, propose other, uh, amendments on the particular matter, we can enhance and enrich the conversation. If, uh, I didn't really mean to interrupt a good lady from Kabuntalan that who didn't since what, but what we are simply saying is that, uh, maybe we can accommodate or address amendments, one amendment after another. Kung wala naman po, then continue po, Mr. Speaker. That was only my point of order, Mr. Chair.
So, so far, all of the proposals have been accepted by the, uh, floor leader?
Not all, not all.
What, what, uh, proposed amendment that was not ac- accepted?
Uh, yung section three on representing Bangsa-Moro constituencies, there are portions, I think it's on the record.
Mr. Speaker?
Yes.
Uh, we might be placed in a position where, for instance, a conversation on a particular proposed amendment has already been terminated only to be revived by another, uh, proposed amendment. I would rather that we stick to provisions after provisions. If there is no person who are interested in that particular provision, then we can continue with the same proponent. Mr. Speaker.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the body? Yeah, MP, uh, the gentleman from Masu is recognized.
Uh, uh, Mr. Speaker, similar with the manifestation a while ago by, by the impis from Kabuntalan. They say, Mr. Speaker, because, uh, they are discussing proposal and we have also a counter-proposal to the proposal of the, the one who proposed. So, we want to introduce also proposal so that, uh, para hindi mabayong usapan, tapos in yung section, magpropose lahat para kung anong mapagdisisyonan doon, na din magpunta naman sa, uh, bagong section. Oh, kasi, uh, just like a while ago, Mr. Speaker, may mga proposals siya ng proponent from the MP from Magindanao, MP Bay Intan, na accepter or not accepted, in which this representation also has- na accepted or not accepted, in which this representation also has reservation on the proposal, accepted or not accepted. May suggestion, the, this representation may mga suggestion din, so that's why we stand on this, uh, floor, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I still have the floor, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, may I remind everyone that we had the caucus this morning? And one of the agreements, Mr. Speaker, is for those who have amendments, proposed amendments, submit it to the secretariat so that there was a time to, to in- integrate or consolidate all those proposals. So I think we should stick to that, uh, agreements, Mr. Speaker. That's why, uh, earlier I didn't interpolate. I just submitted all my proposed amendments.
I'm sorry, uh, floor leader, I, I will-
May I be recognized?
Yeah, uh, yes, uh-
Mr. Speaker, I agree with, uh, by, uh, Intan. Earlier, uh, this morning, we had the caucus, the purpose of which is to, uh, expedite and, uh, because we are, uh, uh, the time is, uh, precious. We have to summarize everything, and when we reach the floor, what we are going to do is tackle the, the, uh, the topics that we, uh, discussed during the caucus. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, that's why, uh, I think we have to go back to what was agreed this morning. That we look at the submissions, uh, as amend, uh, submitted, uh, proposed amendments and ask the floor leader to, uh, accept or not the proposed amendment. Secretariat, please, uh, flash in the screen the proposed amendments as submitted to you. Oh, it appears that the lady from Magindanaw has not submitted his proposed amendment. Uh, majority floor leader, please submit the submission of, uh, MP, uh, the lady from Magindanaw to the secretariat.
Okay, um- One minute.
Floor leader?
So may we request the secretary to flash the amendments screen. Okay, uh, let us continue, number forty, number fourteen, ma'am.
Thank you, on, uh, number fourteen, section two, rule seven, manner of dissemination uh, of the order of business. Um, I propose that we remove the word "as far as practicable" uh, in order not to give space for some excuses, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, honorably, we not, we do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, that would, uh, that would, uh, actually remove the presumption of regularity in the performance of functions of our, uh, personnel.
Anyway, what is that, Mr. Speaker?
If we remove, if we remove the word "as far as prac-practicable", we will be removing the present, the presumption of regularity in the performance of public function.
Um-
Or you are totally-
That's your opinion, Mr. Speaker, but my opinion says otherwise, Mr. Speaker. But anyway, let's move. Um, amend section three, rule, uh, see, uh, rule eleven on question R, um, to remove the last phrase um, or the chief minister so states in writing.
Mr. Speaker, we do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Next is on... Yeah, um, I think we need to include, uh, committee on science and technology and, uh, uh, special committee on Marawi.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Um, on, uh, section fifteen, rule na, uh, rule twelve, uh, since we recog- we still recognize that, um, there is still a minority, even though there is no minority now. Uh, under section five, uh, we add the, the phrase after the, the word whole, provided, uh, provided that one of the vice chair persons comes from the minority.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On, uh, section one, rule thirteen, uh, committee and subcommittee proceedings, when and where held. Um, I propose that we insert the word of regular session of the parliament, uh, Mr. Speaker, as, uh, uh, displayed in the screen, on the screen, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, uh, we do not accept because we are referencing session as, uh, one singular session, th- thus it is in the singular form.
Next, Mr. Speaker is on um, section six, rule thirteen. Um, the proposed amendment is to uh, strike the word "only official" um, in the, in the wordings, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, we do not accept. Uh, let, allow me to just explain why, because it's just about, uh, the recording itself. Uh, it does not mean that it's not going to be open, but it's just the actual recording itself. And it, uh, there is a, a phrase that says unless permission is sought and approval is obtained from the committee chair.
But, um, Mr. Speaker, um, I think we should, um, uh, clarify that the recording is open to the public, that the, the after recording.
Uh, that it will be shared with the public. Um, I think that's, that's also, oh, it depends on the permission of the committee chair.
Okay. Um, on section one to three, rule fifteen. I happen to check the B O L and, um, there is no provision that says about the subpoena power of the B T A parliament. And we are including this in our rules. May we be enlightened what is our, um, reference or what is our basis in including it so in the rules?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, it is own, it is inherent, uh, in legislative bodies to have subpoena power, Mr. Speaker. All legislative bodies, Mr. Speaker.
So this is a presumption that, uh, we have a subpoena power, and therefore we are legitimize, uh, legalizing it through inclusion in the rules.
That's correct, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, on, uh, section nine, rule seventeen. Um, filing of bills and resolutions. Uh, I propose that, uh, we include the word "six hard copies" and the word "N" because that has been the practice. Um, it so happened that it's very hard to be co- to comply, you know? But it's a requirement made by the secretariat, and therefore we should include it there. Otherwise, we will not comply. I don't know why it's six, uh, even myself, and I, I've asked it because if you have a very thick, uh, I have a very thick bill, actually, and, and I, I didn't sleep because I need to print it just to be the first day of filing. I don't know what's the logic behind it. It, it's the secretariat.
Oh, in that case, Mr. Speaker.
So that means to say we can file only one?
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, and for the record, secretariat.
We do not accept, Mr. Speaker. Bakit kayo tumatawa it?
Next.
Efficient use of-
Section ten, rule seventeen. Um, because in the previous rules, we remove the word committee, we remove the committee bills, and therefore on this particular rule, for consistency purposes, we also remove it.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
On section eleven, rule seventeen. Uh, also to remove the word "the chairman of the sponsoring committee".
We accept, we accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On, uh, section two, rule eighteen. Um- Yeah, it, uh, but, but I, this, I think this is material. Can, since we are all government of the day, we are all part of the authors. Okay na, okay na. Um-
No, no proposed amendment, but just a clarification because of the government of the day.
Uh, section two D. Yeah, committee amendments. Is there such thing as committee amendments?
Mr. Speaker, uh, yes, there are committee amendments, but it has never been exercised in the past parliament, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, next is on on, uh, rule twenty-nine, broadcasting the parliament. I, I think, um, my issue here is that um, the parliament shall establish a system for closed-circuit viewing of floor proceedings in the offices of all members, the word "the offices of all members".
Matter of style, Mr. Speaker, it, uh, there should be a comma after the proceedings and come another comma after members.
Okay, because I didn't understand it, Mr. Speaker.
There's no proposed amendment there that needs to be accepted.
Yeah, um, uh, there's an explanation to it, so I think their, uh, explanation of putting a comma there, uh, is accepted. Clarify, oh, wait, wait, um, on, uh, section two. Um- Walito na ako. Um, uh, the proposal there is to just to put on heading, just to put on heading, walang heading. Shall be guided by, yeah, the, the highlighted one.
Okay, we, we accept, Mr. Speaker.
Um, on section one, rule thirty, a session hall conference room, uh, letter A. A session hall shall be used for plenary sessions. Um- My counterproposal is the session hall shall be used only by the B T A parliament. Kasi nakikita natin sa social media noon, uh, nag-aalam, eh, MPs, yung mga nagpapipicture doon, you know? So just to preserve the integrity of the parliament, I think this is exclusive for us.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note.
Um, and letter C, a matter of style, uh, because the letter B, uh, after letter A talks about the members lounge. Uh, for letter C, letter D, and the, uh, letter D, uh, we move it above the members lounge.
Okay, uh, we accept, Mr. Speaker, with some, uh, some modification with style.
Yes.
Anyway, this will be approved subject to style. Secretariat, take note of the acceptance.
I think it's material, Mr. Chair, because, uh, the subject of the other, uh, the, the enumeration is about the lounge, while we are talking about the flag, the documentation, and the rest, which is not appropriate. Um, section two, rule three. Um, the proposal is, uh, also to include the deputy minority leader.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Deputy minority leader.
Leader. And section three, the seats in the gallery, um, I think I don't understand what is the meaning of after the first row? What row is that? It's a row? Yeah, but, wha- what's, what's, what is that row?
Next row, second row.
Second row, okay. Um, and last but not the least, although I have one, na hindi ko na include about, I'll, I'll say it later. Um, Bangsa Moro symbols, just for consistency. Uh, we use the word B T A, and section three, rule eleven, uh, about the singing of the hymn, we, we include the word in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region. And my last proposal, um, Mr. Speaker, is about the, um, rights of the mem- uh, the MPs to be informed and invited in all committee meetings. Because in the past, we were not informed of the other meetings. Uh, so we don't have a choice whether to, um, listen to them or just an observer. But a matter of information being part of the rights of the MPs.
Both, both are accepted, the first about, uh, rule three, section twenty-one, and the notice to the members.
Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Speaker.
And you now, uh, are there other propo- proposed amendments? The gentleman from Tawi Tawi is recognized.
MP Jet Lim and then MP Jam Ramos is also raising her hand.
Bismillah, Rahman Ryan, salamualaikum, warahmatullahi, ta'ala barakato. Mr. Speaker, may envi- uh, may I, uh, request the secretariat to put on screen rule seven on courtroom, particularly section one. The proposed amendment reads as follow, uh, under section one, subsections D, force mature events or acts of God such as but not limited to natural disasters like typhoons, floods, earthquakes, technical issues with carriers, and weather disturbances making travel impossible or unsafe. That's a proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note.
May I, may I also request the secretariat to put on screen my second proposed amendment? my second proposed amendment? Rule seventeen on bills and resolution, section two, subsection A, government bill refers to a legislative initiative that the government of the day submits to parliament for approval or amendment, period.
Accepted, we accept, Mr. Speaker.
Similar amendment on rule seven, section two, subsection B, private member bills refer to a legislative initiative introduced by a member of parliament who is not a minister for approval or amendment, period.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
That's all, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
Secretariat, please take note of the two accepted proposals.
Next is MP Jam Ramos on Zoom.
Thank you, um, Mr. Speaker. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala warahmatullahi. Uh, my first proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker, is on section four, rule twelve, parliamentary committees. I am proposing, Mr. Speaker, the insertion-
Increase the volume of your voice.
Yes. Let me check my audio, Mr. Speaker. Lalo na po ba? Naririnig na po ba ako? Mr. Speaker, do you hear me loud and clear now? Mr. Speaker?
Proceed, proceed.
Uh, I'll just, uh, turn off my video, uh, this might affect the, uh, my signal. Okay, Mr. Speaker, my first proposed amendment is on the insertion to section four, rule twelve. I'd like to insert the Committee on Petitions. Uh, the committee, the proposed language is this, Mr. Speaker. The Committee on Petitions shall have twenty-five members. It shall have jurisdiction on all matters, including, but not limited to consideration of written and e-petition submitted to the parliament and engagement of public with the work of the parliament. Mr. Speaker, um, the, um, the, if, uh, given the chance that this, um-
There is no need for you to explain, we will just accept, we will just ask the floor leader whether or not he, she or, uh, she accept.
Okay, Mr. Speaker, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The proposal is reject- rejected, Mr. Speaker, we do not petition, we do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, may I proceed with my second proposal, Mr. Speaker?
Proceed, proceed.
Yes, again, on section three, rule twelve, on statutory committees. Uh, I am proposing for the insertion, uh, to this section, uh, regarding the inclusion of Committee on Women, Youth, and Children. And the proposed language is this, Mr. Speaker. The Committee on Women, Youth, and Children shall have twenty-five members. It shall have jurisdiction on all matters relating to the representation, participation, welfare, and development of women, youth, and children.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. My third proposed amendment is on the same section, Mr. Speaker. I would like to insert for the Committee on Cultural Heritage. And the proposed language, Mr. Speaker, is this. The Committee on Cultural Heritage shall have seventeen members. It shall have jurisdiction on all matters relating to the preservation of cultural heritage, including but not limited to establishment and sustainability of cultural institutions, programs, and projects in the region.
We do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Speaker. My next proposed amendment is on the same, um, section and rule on parliamentary committees. I'd like to, uh, uh, insert the Committee on Electoral Processes and the proposed language is this. The Committee on Electoral Processes shall have seventeen members. It shall have jurisdiction on all matters relating to the enactment of the Bangsa-Moro Electoral Code as well as other measures for regional and local elections. It shall provide timeline of its activities under completion to the plenary and regularly report to the progress of consultations, hearings, and meetings on the Electoral Code and other measures.
We do not accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, uh, I would like to proceed to my next, um, our proposed amendment is on the inclusion of enactment of priority codes as main or primary priority of existing statutory committees. I'd like to propose for amendment to insertion of phrase in capital letters to section three, rule twelve, Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management. The Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management shall have thirty-one members. It shall have jurisdiction on all matters relating to the enactment of the Bangsa-Moro Revenue Code as well as the preparation of budget and appropriation of funds for the operations of the Bangsa-Moro government, including its expenditure, payment of public indebtedness, claims against the Bangsa-Moro government, intergovernmental revenue sharing, and in general, all matters relating to public expenditures. The work of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Management includes the scrutiny and review of the budget and expenditure of the Bangsa-Moro government.
We do not accept, Mr. Speaker. We believe that it is, uh, the placement of the Bangsa-Moro Revenue Code is more appropriate under the Committee on Ways and Means, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Uh, my next proposal is again, an amendment to insertion of phrase in capital letters to section three, rule twelve, Committee on Local Government. The Committee on Local Government shall have twenty-nine members. It shall have jurisdiction on all matters relating to enactment of the Bangsa-Moro Local Government Code as well as those relating to local administration and local government units such as the provinces, cities, municipalities, and barangays within the bar, including the revenues and expenditures.
We accept, Mr. Speaker, subject to style, the placement, uh, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, my, my, yes. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker, my last proposed amendment is, uh, uh, an insertion of phrase in capital letters to section three, rule twelve, the Committee on Indigenous Peoples Affairs. The Committee on Indigenous Peoples Affairs shall have seventeen members. It shall have jurisdiction on all matters relating to enactment of the Indigenous Peoples Code as well as those relating to indigenous peoples' rights embodied in the all bar and the development of their communities.
We, uh, do not accept, Mr. Speaker, for the same reason that the Bangsa-Moro Revenue Code is under the Committee on Ways and Means, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, that would be all, uh, thank you for accepting.
Secretariat, please take note of those accepted amendments and those not accepted.
Next, uh, is MP Romeo Sema and then MP Haji Abdullah and then MP Babao.
We, we recognize the, uh, gentleman from Potabato City.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, uh, thank you, Macho. So, uh, Mr. Speaker, uh, this morning in our, uh, uh, caucus meeting, so we agreed to insert one, uh, whereas in the introductory provisions. So, like to, that whereas the bit- whereas the BTA one appointed by, uh, the RRD, President Gregor Dett- Dettie, adopted a param- uh, parliamentary rules, procedures, and practices to govern the BTA one proceedings. So-
We accept, Mr. Speaker, just subject to style on the BTA one.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, thank you. Uh, MP Haji Abdullah.
The gentleman from Lanau del Suris recognized.
It's, Mr. Speaker, rule number twelve, section one, paragraph two, after the word parliament, rule twelve. Section one, paragraph two, after the word parliament. Paragraph two. I would like to make a proposal insertion. It should be composed of at least twenty members and a maximum of forty members. At least, at least twenty members and not more than forty members.
That is, uh, that is a limitation that's acceptable, actually. Acceptable limitation.
Committees, natin.
The composition of, uh, committees.
We have a counterproposal, Mr. Speaker. If the sense is about the number of members to include under the committee under section three, uh, rule twelve, no, section three, at the end of the enumeration, the membership of the statutory committees shall be, as a last, 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 number fifteen pa, sige. Okay, again, the membership of statutory committees shall be indicative on the base, on the basis of proportional representation and can be increased or increased as may be deemed proper. Uh, okay, ulit. The membership of statutory committees shall be indicative on the basis of proportional representation affiliated with the majority and minority of the parliament, comma, and may be increased or decreased as may be deemed proper by the majority leader.
What is the pleasure of the proponent? Do you yield or do you withdraw?
I withdraw na, I withdraw, Mr. Speaker.
Secretariat, the proponent has withdrawn his proposal. The gentleman from Bayang-Lanau del Suris recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Maliit lang po 'yung aking, uh, suggestion here. This pertains with the proposal of MP Diamela Ramos about the Committee on Women, Children, and Youth. I would like to propose also to include persons with disability. See, just one word, for example, Committee on Women, Children, comma, Youth, and Persons with Disability.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note.
Additional, additional word lang? Okay, thank you very much.
MP Alamiya.
Thank you, uh-
MP Alamiya and then MP Esmael.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, I only have, uh, just a few. Um, I'd, I'd just like to put on record, Mr. Speaker, that this is a better set of rules compared to the, to our rules in the first BTA. Um, I'd like to refer the secretariat to rule thirteen, section four, conduct of sessions. Secretariat, please, can we go to rule thirteen, section four, conduct of sessions? Rule thirteen, section four, conduct of sessions. Rule thirteen, sorry, thirteen, X I I I. Section four. Ca- the, okay, I think this is a different one. Where's the section on conduct of sessions? Conduct of sessions, yes. Okay, so it's under another rule. So, conduct of sessions on plenary sessions, let me refer you to the third paragraph. Mr. Speaker, if the, uh, if the major- majority, the floor leader would agree, um, it states that, it's, uh, it states there, upon motion of a member prior to the close of a given session, concurred in by at least two-thirds vote of those present, the parliament may convene and hold, et cetera, et cetera. So my proposal is to change the words "two-thirds votes" to a simple majority of those present.
We accept.
Thank you. Um, further, so this is, this may happen when there's force majeure or the occurrence of, uh, national or regional emergency, um, on the phrase "and hold the immediately succeeding session through teleconference, comma, hybrid teleconference, comma, video conference, and other reliable forms." So, a hybrid where there's face-to-face, so it's a mixture of face-to-face and teleconference. Actually, pareho lang, hybrid video teleconference or hybrid of any of those, of any of the latter, the former. Yes, through teleconference, video, sorry, uh, teleconference, comma, video conference, or, or any hybrid of the la- former. Correct? Or any hybrid thereof. Or any hybrid thereof. Video, comma, uh, vi- video conference, comma, or any hybrid thereof, comma, comma, and other rela- okay na.
We accept.
Thank you.
Subject to style, Mr. Speaker.
Subject to style, na doble 'yung video conference.
Secretariat, please take note.
Okay, so there are still several minor and typ- typographical and stylistic errors. Uh, so before this can be finalized, I'm no longer going to go through that one by one, but just a, uh, this can be actually easily corrected by proofreading before filing. That's it, uh, Mr. Speaker, thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, MP, okay, MP-
The, the gentleman from Potabato City is recognized.
Esmael and then MP Loong.
Albiyamina Shatanwazim. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Salamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala barakatuh. Uh, thank you, Honorable Speaker and Majority Floor Leader. Um, I would like to propose amendments on rule, um, rule nine, uh, debates deliberation, section four, section four. Um, says here, uh, the recognition, uh, or recognition of member. Whenever a member of the parliament, section four, recognition of member, sanayon. Yun. Um. Okay. Whenever a member of the parliament, member of the parliament wishes to speak, he or she shall- wishes to speak, he or she shall request the majority floor leader that he, she be recognized by right, uh, raising his, his or her hand. Okay, sige. Uh, ulitin ko nalang na, uh, whenever a member of the parliament wishes to speak, he, she shall request the majority floor leader that she or, or he or she be recognized by raising his, her hand. By this, this, okay, to, kama na, uh, period na don. Then, the speaker shall allow those duly recognized to speak to proceed and obtain the floor.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Thank you very much. Uh, and then on the second paragraph, uh, when two or more member raise hand, at the same time, the speaker shall allow the one duly recognized by the majority floor leader to speak first, provided that as far as pra- practicable, member of the majority and the minority shall be, shall be allowed to speak alternately on the floor.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note. Hindi niyo yata nahabol yun.
Okay, MP Loong and then MP Sinalinding and then MP Ali.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Thank you, uh, Mister Speaker. Um, this is just a minor technical, uh, uh, error, Mister Speaker. Can, I ask the secretariat to proceed to rule four, section eight. Uh, it states minority floor leader and then the majority floor leader. So, uh, can we just change that?
We accept, Mister Speaker.
And, um, just a short addition to rule twelve, um, section eleven. Rule twelve, uh, section three, um, dash eleven. Rule twelve. Uh, under, and, uh, section three, uh, paragraph, uh, e- eleven, eleven. On Committee on Public Works, if we can add safety, so it will read, planning, construction, maintenance, improvement, comma, safety and repair of public infrastructure.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note.
Um. Lastly, Mister Chair, um, for section nineteen of the same rule twelve. Section nineteen. For section nineteen, uh, Mister Speaker, um, it states that, uh, in case of vacancy in the membership of a committee, the same shall be filled up immediately by the majority or minority members of the parliament whose member caused the vacancy. Uh, personally, I think this is vague unless we put, it will be filled up by the, uh, majority or minority, uh, leaders of the parliament whose member caused the vacancy.
We accept, Mister Speakers.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Okay.
Secretariat, please take note.
MP Sinalinding and then MP.
The gentleman from North Cotabato is recognized.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. His motion is, uh, for the proposed amendment under rule number twelve, section three, item number six that reads Committee on Health. The Committee on Health shall have seventeen members. It shall have jurisdiction on all matters relating to public health, comma, sanitation, and hygiene, comma, medical, comma, allied healthcare, comma, hospital, comma, and we shall delete the word and, quarantine services and facilities for the promotion of health services and awareness to the public, comma, including nutrition and population and its related activities and services, period.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Secretariat, please take note. The gentleman from Sultan Pudarat is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim. Uh, I have a proposed amendment, Mister Speaker, from, uh, uh, rule, uh, eighteen. On letter B, second reading. Second reading, go sa second reading, yan. We'd like to insert this, uh, the color green sentence, uh, the, the, the proponent. Actually, Mister Speaker, I have three proposal, uh, amendment, but I will withdraw the two and I will, uh, push for the color bean, which states that the proponent shall deliver his or her authorship speech, which is the exploratory statement of his or her, uh, bill or resolution, Mister Speaker.
We accept, Mister Speaker.
That's all, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note.
Mister Speaker, there being no other interpolators, i- amendments. I move to close the period of amendment.
There is, there is a motion to terminate the period of amendment.
I move to approve the.
Has been seconded, there being no objection, the period of amendment is now terminated.
I move to approve the resolution, subject to style, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to, uh, approve proposed resolution number twenty-eight, resolution providing for the rules, procedures, and practices of the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority Parliament, subject to style. Been seconded, as amended, yeah, as amended.
Mister Speaker, moving to business for the day.
Eh, is there any second?
What?
There being no objection, eh, proposed resu- proposed resolution is now approved.
Thank you. Mister Speaker, for business, uh, uh, under business for the day, proposed resolution number three. Uh, may we request the author? MP Bayinta Nampatuwan and, uh, magopen na tayo, no? I move to open the period of interpolation, Mister Speaker.
The gent, the lady from Maginda now is recognized.
And then ako mag-speech pag nag-author kayo, wala ng interpolation, approve na. Oh, mag-speech na ako, may mga tanong eh.
Mister Speaker. Ayun nga.
Are there any substantive amendments to this?
Yeah, I think I need to read my prepared, ano. I, I agree with that, nakita ko na that.
The lady from Maginda now is recognized.
Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, in the name of Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful, Mister Speakers, team colleagues in this August Parliament, guests, ladies and gentlemen, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. It is my honor to sponsor proposed resolution number zero-three entitled Resolution Commanding and Extending Profound Gatitude to His Excellency President Ferdinand Bongbong Romualdes Marcos Junior for honoring and sustaining the gains of peace, peace agreements which led to the unprecedented unification of the Moro fronts in the country. Section thirteen of the Republic Act one-one-zero-five-four, or the Bangsa Moro Organic Law, was amended by section one of R A eleven-fifteen-ninety-three, otherwise known as the Act Resetting the First Regular Elections in the Bangsa Moro Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, thereby postponing the first regular elections in BARM. Therefore, the first regular election of the Bangsa Moro Government shall be held and synchronized with the twenty-twenty-five national elections. It is also stated in Republic Act one-one-five-nine-three that during the extension of the BTA transition period, the Bangsa Moro Transition Authority shall continue as the interim government of the BARM. Provided, however, the president may appoint the eighty new interim members of the BTA who shall serve up to the June thirty, twenty-twenty-five, or until their successors shall have been elected and qualified. On August twelve, twenty-twenty-two, or just more than a month after the president, after President Bongbong Marcos took his oath as the seventeenth president of the Republic of the Philippines, he administered the oath of the eighty new and reappointed members of the BTA representing the Moro Islamic Liberation Front, Moro National Liberation Front, and various sectors from the government of the Philippines. The appointment was in accordance with the implementation of the Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsa Moro, the culmination of seventeen years of negotiation between the MLF and the GPHs through the BOL. The appointment is also a sign of his commitment and prioritization of the BARM and the welfare of the Bangsa Moro. With the new BTA, the former contending members of the MLF and MLF have been finally united under one Bangsa Moro Autonomous Government. The MLF's participation, particularly under the leadership of Jer- Chairman Misuri, is a product of the convergence effort of the unit, uh, the Office of the Presidential Advisor on Peace, Reconciliation, and Unity to harmonize the Bangsa Moro peace agreements, including the nineteen-seventy-six Tripoli Deal, the nineteen-ninety-six Final Peace Agreements, and the twenty-fourteen Comprehensive Agreement on the Bangsa Moro. Secretary Carlito Galvez Junior, who is serving as presidential advisor on the peace process, said that during the out-taking of the eighty BTA members, that with the joining of the MLF and the MLF and with the balance and fair, equitable composition of the thirty-nine GPH nominees, this is now, this is now no longer just the BTA of the old BARM, but the BTA of a united BARM. After all, our primordial task as members of the parliament is the success of our land, and the success of our land relies mainly on the unity of the Bangsa Moro government. The BTA is extending its profound gratitude to President Ferdinand Marcos Junior for making the Bangsa Moro peace process a priority and for pursuing peace-building initiatives in the country. The BTA likewise extends its gratitude and appreciation to Secretary Carlito Galvez Junior for his unwavering dedication and hard work in the peace process. Having said that, and all this, I humbly seek for the immediate approval of this measure. Thank you very much. Wassalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh.
Mister Speaker, uh, I wish to, um, convey that MP Mantawil has manifested her intention to amend a portion uh, and add, uh, another whereas clause. And, uh.
So we will terminate the period of interpolation, so we can proceed with the, uh, period of amendments.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with the, I, I saw the, some, some ma- minor and major.
So we move to close, I move to close the period of interpolation?
There is a motion to terminate the period of interpolation, it's been seconded, the period of interpolation is now terminated.
I move to open the period of four amendments.
The period of amendments now open.
Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Thank you very much for this opportunity and for this, uh, I move to on page. Last page, I'm I move to amend, whereas Secretary Gal- Carlito Galvez Junior, the presidential advisor on peace reconciliation and unity, said during the out-taking of the eighty members that with the joining of the MLF and MLF and with a balance and fair or equitable composition of the thirty-nine GPH nominees, this is now no longer just the BTA and the old BARM, but the BTA and the united BARM. So I want to add, whereas, in conformity with the ideals and aspirations of the interim Chief Minister Ahud Balawag Ibrahim, towards one united Bangsa Moro, Secretary Carlito Galvez Junior, the presidential advisor on peace, reconciliation, and unity, said during the out-taking of the eighty members that, that with the joining of the MLF and the MLF and with a balance and fair or equitable composition of the thirty-nine GPH nominees, this is now no longer just the BTA of the old BARM, but the BTA of the united BARM. So with due respect to our Chief Minister Ahud Balawag Ibrahim, so.
Um, I think, um, this is a quoted portion of the speech of Secretary Galvez. It can be long, it can be short. And the proponent wants it to be long, uh, there's no harm in that, provided that it was said. So we are quoting what has been said, and I, I accept that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, on page, naunang last page, sorry. So on the third page, uh, I think it was just maybe, uh, confusing because of a lot of wars, but I hadn't heard since I was born that MNL F and MLF had been at war. So, I move for the removal of the words restructuring of the former worrying members should be removed in this paragraph. So, whereas with the new BTA, it should be okay. First paragraph of the page, whereas.
We remove the entire paragraph. That's the proposal? We remove the entire paragraph?
No, 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 only the, only the former worrying members of former worrying members of.
I, I accept that. I actually saw that after it was already printed. Yeah, I accept that.
So, that's all.
Mister Speaker, MP Ali wishes to be recognized.
The gentleman from Tawi Tawi is recognized. This will be the last proposed amendment.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Thank you, uh, floor leader. I just would like to, to add, in the last page, uh, after now therefore, if resolved, resolve further. Copy of this resul- copy of this resolution, we finish the office of the President of the Republic of the Philippines.
I accept, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Secretariat, please take note.
Yes, finally, Mister Speaker, I think it, I, uh, reflect the wish of all members of this August body to become, uh, co-authors of the.
Secretariat, please take note.
Okay, I move.
Terminate the period of amendment. Floor leader, terminate the period of amendment.
Yes, we move to close the period of ammen- uh, amendments.
There is now a motion to terminate the period of amendment, it's been seconded, there being no objection, the period of amendments now terminated.
We move to, I move to, uh, approve the proposed resolution, subject to style, Mister Speaker.
There is a motion to approve proposed resolution number zero-three, subject to style. Been seconded, there being no objection, proposed resolution number zero-three is now approved.
Finally, proposed resolution number thirty-four, may we recognize the author, Mister Speaker, MPs, MP, Amro, Amro Cimacatanong, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, colleagues, good afternoon. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi barakatuh. Uh, two days ago, one of our brother commander, the one-twenty-second base returned to the mercy of our Lord, hence this, uh. returned to the mercy of our Lord, hence this, uh, simple resolution. Resolution expressing profound gratitude, sincere condolences of the Bangsa Moro Parliament on the death of Abdulwali Jimmy Emradiyamuda, one-hundred-twenty-second base commander. Whereas Abdulwali Jimmy Emradiyamuda, one-hundred-twenty-second base commander passed away and returned to the mercy of Allah in Saffar twenty-four fourteen forty-four, twenty September twenty twenty-two. Whereas Commander Abdulwali Jimmy Radiyamuda was a dutiful and, uh, dedicated Mujahideen who exuded bravery and was not afraid to risk his own life in defending the cause of the MILF. He was among the Mujahideens who defended Camp Nusa during the nineteen-seventy-seven battle between the MNLF and the AFP. He lead his men in defending the MILF camps during the year two-thousand, two-thousand-three and two-thousand-eight battles between the MILF and the AFP. Whereas Commander Jimmy Radiyamuda was known for his programs centered on peace and crime-free community. He himself ensured that peace reigned within his area of jurisdiction. He assisted in the arrest and imprisonment of criminals, especially rapuses and users. He also settled many local feuds. He is a pious leader who is loved by his men for his unselfish and dedicated service to the MILF and the community. Whereas the passing away of a dedicated and passionate Mujahideen as Commander Jimmy Radiyamuda is a great loss to the Moro people. Whereas his services to the Bangsa Moro people will be remembered with great honor and pride and will never be forgotten. Now therefore, we it resolved, as it is hereby resolved, that the Bangsa Moro Parliament to express, uh, as it hereby express its profound gratitude, sincere condolences on the death of Commander Abdulwali Jimmy Emradiyamuda. Resolve further that the copy of this resolution be furnished to the bereaved family of the late Commander Jimmy Emradiyamuda. Mister. The authors are welcome to accept any other brother Mujahideen who wants to co-author and his fellow MPs from Lanau.
Okay, Mister Speaker, uh, I would like to make an omnibus motion to, um, dispense with the interpolation and amendments, except that, uh, we would like to also be part of the resolution, Mister Speaker.
And you're moving for the approval?
Eh, okay, so in they move to approve the resolution subject to style.
There is now a motion to termi- to, uh, there is an omnibus motion to terminate the period of interpolation debate and the period of amendment and the, uh, further motion for the approval of this proposed resolution subject to style. It's been seconded, there being no objection, the proposed resolution is hereby approved.
Mister Speaker, I move to adjourn the session.
There is a motion to adjourn, session is adjourned.
Until Mo- Monday, one o'clock PM, Mister Speaker.
So.
Oy, Monday ba.